Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 6th Vision City Council meeting. Rose, you can go ahead and go ahead.
Mayor Herndon is absent. Vice Mayor Moncada?
Present.
Councilmember Brolio?
Present.
Councilmember Shemente?
Present.
Councilmember Sharado?
Present.
Staff is present.
All right, so the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 3A is to proclaim the week of February 11th, 2024, from February 17th, 2024, as Kindness Week in the City of Angels and further deem the city as random acts of kindness. Like, would you just hold a comment?
You can if you want, first, and then do that.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open it, Jill, I see you're in the audience. You want to stop on it for recording?
And if you can turn that one on. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Moncada. And thank you so much. This is always my favorite City Council meeting of the year. It has been for as long as I can remember. And that's because Kindness Week in Caligres County started 30 years ago, right here in Angel's Camp, with a giveaway of 10,000 long stem roses from my parents' flower shop on North Main Street. They wanted to practice a random act of kindness and an act of senseless beauty. In 1994, they grabbed onto the concept of giving something away and not expecting anything in return. And here we are. Kind acts are every bit as intentional as your presence is here tonight. And the relevance of kindness is that it is, as your proclamation puts forth, inclusive. Kind acts are inclusive of things like listening, being patient. Kindness shows us our better selves. In her poem, "Small Kindnesses," Dinooshon Lemerys puts it perfectly. We have so little of each other now, so far from tribe and fire, only these brief moments of exchange. What if they are the true dwelling of the holy, these fleeting temples we make together when we say, "Here, have my seat. Go ahead, you first. I like your hat." Thank you, Vice Mayor Moncada and members of the City Council for this important proclamation. And thank you for the kindness you show in showing up for our community in the work you so tirelessly do, not only this week, but in every week of the year. I appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Angels recognizes the value of acts of kindness that are performed without prompting or reason, and how these acts can positively impact the person offering kindness, the person receiving the act of kindness, and those witnessing. And whereas acts of kindness can be performed by any person in the City of Angels, regardless of age, origin, education, gender, religious belief, lifestyle, or abilities, for the good of those around them. And whereas kind individuals can create a more caring community and help to perpetuate genuine acts of kindness within their city, state, and even throughout the world. And whereas we seek to cultivate thoughtful and compassionate residents by teaching our youth to make a difference through random acts of kindness. And whereas Random Acts of Kindness Week is recognized as an international celebration intended to encourage all of us to practice acts of kindness in our homes, schools, businesses, and communities. Whereas this year, as in the past, the Seek the Kindness Project will encourage and work with Caligres County Schools to create and increase awareness for being kind. The light blue wristband will be distributed countywide. The idea is that the wristbands will encourage acts of kindness throughout the county. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Isabel Moncada, Vice Mayor of Angels Camp, California, hereby proclaim February 11th through February 17th, 2024, as City of Angels Random Acts of Kindness Week, and encourage the people of Angels to practice random acts of kindness in the spirit of compassion, kindness, and goodwill towards all persons. Do I need to read the unwitness?
You are.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to item four, approval of the agenda as posted or amended.
Salute.
I'll say it.
Thank you. I'm first by Councilmember Shemente, and second by Councilmember Brolio. Rose, can you take that?
Shemente?
Aye.
Brolio?
Aye.
Sharado?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, item five, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Is there anyone here for public comment? Would you mind standing up and stepping to the podium again?
My name's Patricia Harkin. It's with N R, A R, K U N S. I don't usually do this, but I'm really concerned about the configuration of the new park in Angels. I'm an elderly person. I've had three surgeries. I've not been able to drive for a while. If I was driving down, and right now, I cannot remember the name of the street towards the park.
Patricia, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this item, the park, is actually on the agenda, so wouldn't you mind holding on to that?
Oh, I didn't talk on, I didn't know it was on.
Absolutely, no worries whatsoever. We'll just get through this next item and then...
Okay. I didn't know.
Thank you, I apologize. Is there any other public comment in the room? Online, Rose?
None.
We'll move on to item six, which is the consent agenda. Is there any comment? Any questions, anything of that sort? Was there any public comment on the consent agenda? All right, I'll bring that back and you'll be looking for a motion.
Salute.
Thank you. All right. First by Councilmember Brolio, second by Councilmember Sharado. Rose?
Shemente?
Aye.
Brolio?
Aye.
Sharado?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so now we'll move into the agenda 7A, which is the beautiful park update. I'll turn that over to Amy, and then we do open that to you. You're open to zip up.
Mayor, Vice Mayor? Mayor. Well, calling mayor for tonight, councilmembers. Basically, not a lot has changed, but we are looking at the 20th and the 21st for actually doing the geotechnical investigations. And so it's not to fall way behind on design. We are actually, we've started this. So basically, we can get all of the plans drawn up for all the contents of the park, even if we don't know precisely where everything will go. We are currently working on the park course contents. Our next planning committee meeting for the fair playground, for the park, will be on the 21st. We have a subcommittee meeting on the 13th. And basically, that's pretty much what's going on. But I will add that, since I suspect I may hear some things coming up, the emphasis of our park is to appeal to all ages, as we've discussed. And one of the big things about the park is to make it ADA accessible to all ages. That was something we heard when we did our outreach, where we had approximately 950 people gave their input. And that was one of the major things, preventing people from going to the park. Sam's Way is that narrow little road that you go into to get down to the park. It's... Oh, okay. And we are looking at putting a better access to the park because the Red Cross basically told us during our P S P S that the one thing we needed in order to make that a gathering place during emergencies was an improved access road. And so that is part of our plan and part of the reason we purchased the two adjacent parcels. And I will be quiet now, so that we may hear. I will open it up. Hi, Amy. So with the geotech, so are they coming in this week? Were they scheduled to come in this week? They were scheduled to come in a bit before 6:00, but because of the rain, they had to reschedule. And they were actually going to come in in two sets of time, one with trench and one with drill. We're now going to do both things at the same time on the 20th. Great, thank you.
Amy, are we still, are we optimistic about starting in March still? Or?
The actual word that voyeur uses is spring. We will start in summer, spring. So they say that because of weather dependencies. So like I said, we are doing design work now. The actual design details on things. We are ordering equipment and proceeding with that to avoid getting... We are like a week or two behind because we wanted to have the geotech taken care of by now. But we're trying to do everything we can so that we'll be able to put the ground running.
Good, thank you. And once again, I want to commend you for conducting the last park meeting, where we discussed the adult park horse. And I just thought it was an interesting, comments were interesting, and feedback was good. And hopefully, is that subcommittee then going to?
Yes. So we have two members of that committee who are going to meet and actually pick out the elements of the park course, the actual equipment, just like we did with the children's playground. And then we'll bring it back to the full committee to vote on.
Amy, sorry, I have one more question. It says about contact with Timbercraft, but it never states if he actually got back.
Say that again?
It states that staff contacted Timbercraft for a settlement. So it doesn't say that he ever got back.
He did. He got back to us. He's on a large job. And as soon as he's done with that, he will be going out. In fact, we just let him message for him today, Chris did, to go check out the woods there. So I don't know what he asked for.
Any other comments? All right, I will open it up to public comment.
I don't normally do this. I am, however, concerned about the positioning of the park for the children. I am elderly, and I've had both hips replaced. And recovering from the hips, something I found out is I was told not to drive. And I went to front town, to the big parking lot, to test out how I could drive, about six weeks out of surgery. Found out my foot shifting from gas to brake wasn't working so well when I had my left hip done. My concern about the park is where it's positioned on that corner. I, as an elderly person or anyone else, a drunk driver, coming down that road, inadvertently hitting the gas, speeding, losing control. You have children. You're babysitting young ones. Grandchildren, young children, all of you. They could be deceased playing in that park because someone's car goes into that corner. Unless you have cement, that's not going to stop. A thousands-of-pound car from going through and possibly killing children. It used to be further in where there were trees, and it was safer towards the middle. It's now right there at the corner. And I feel it should be addressed and looked at and possibly repositioned. There's a shade area or picnic area that could maybe easily be used, I don't know, and move a picnic area, where you're going to have adults who will be vigilant. But it's concerning to me because children are our future. I've babysat all my life until I couldn't. And I care about children. And I just think that park is in the wrong spot. I'm sorry I'm late to the game, but with all the surgeries I had, I could never get here. I could never read the stories in the paper until I finally, sometime later this year, was getting papers again. So I know I am late to it, but hopefully, maybe someone can take another look at the positioning of the park and think about it. And think about the children that are going to be there. And it's anybody. It could literally be a teenager drinking and driving. And I just don't ever want to see that happen in this town. The children are too precious to us. And that's my concern, and that's why I finally got here. I just had knee surgery, and I finally could drive. About a week ago, week and a half ago, I was allowed to start driving. I've only driven to the grocery store and stuff. But I made sure I got here tonight because it's that important to me. And I'm sorry I'm late, but I figure they relate, they never did. At least, address the issue and have some of you think about the children. It's not... You know, the aesthetics is one thing. The children's a whole nother thing. And one life is one life to me. And that's about all I have to say about that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I would suggest that maybe, Amy, you can reach out and show her some draft plans of where the playground is going to be and things.
Really quickly, is there any other public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries. Is there any online?
No.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment and bring it back.
Okay.
Yes, we can definitely do that. I'll get your contact information.
And thank you, Amy. I will move on to item... item resolution number 2412, approving the purchase of Assessor's Parcel Number 060010045, and authorizing the city administrators to sign and authorize and have reported all relevant documents and agreements. Amy, obviously.
Mayor, councilmembers, this parcel, for those of you who don't instantly know by knowing that 6001045 is the parking area adjacent to the Pickled Pork Cafe. And in closed settings, we've discussed the necessity for additional parking in the historic district and how this parcel would be very helpful towards that. And it does appear we have an accepted offer. But before we can purchase it, we would need your approval at a public hearing to move forward. You have to answer any questions.
One question?
So we have to open a public hearing? Is that on the agenda, to open?
Oh.
It's a resolution.
It's just a resolution.
In a public forum.
Oh, on a public forum?
Sorry.
We're not doing a first reading, second reading.
No.
Okay.
My only question is, is there, if we go through the purchase of this, is there a timeframe of when we would start with removing any material that pensing offered?
So we're in the process of getting quotes right now or demo?
I appreciate your work on this, Amy, and I think it's going to be a great addition to the city. To have, even though it's a parking lot now, it will become part of the cities. And I think that's a good thing.
We have one question. So I noticed today when I drove by that there were two cars parked. One was on this lot, and then one was right next to it. What steps will we be taking to let the neighboring people know that that won't be, you know, that it won't be open without a park?
Basically, we haven't gotten an exact plan, but I'm anticipating knocking on their door once we've gotten a desk row or closed desk row. Obviously, before we start moving things around, we can talk to them. Giving out a timeline? Um, yeah. Gosh, month, maybe, or, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I noticed that too. We wouldn't want to have to follow them. It would be bad.
All right, I will move on to public comment. People doing public comment.
Thanks.
So online?
None.
Okay, so we'll bring this back and be looking for a motion to approve this resolution.
I think a motion to approve resolution 2412.
Okay, first by Councilmember Brolio.
Second.
Okay, by Councilmember Shemente. Rose, Rose.
Shemente?
Aye.
Brolio?
Aye.
Sharado?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C, approved resolution number 2411, waiving registration inspection in vacant property development facilities for vacant buildings for the first year of the newly adopted code through December 31st, 2024. Amy, obviously.
Mayor, councilmembers, this is something we've done in the past, sometimes when we pass new ordinances. And in particular, this one, because the idea is to form partnerships with people who have the vacant properties and try to encourage them to follow thoroughly through as much as possible. We would like to be able to present to them that we would be doing this without charge to them for the first year. The idea that a positive start to this program would mean a positive program overall. And that's why we're asking you to allow us to waive the fees for the first year. If you're comfortable with that, we could always waive them for the remainder of the fiscal year until just July. But we're asking through the 7th 31st, if possible. We have to answer any questions.
If you have any questions?
So Amy, I thought part of the ordinance had a fee waiver in it.
It does, but we didn't want people to have to go through that process.
Okay, so this waives that process.
This would waive that process and just make it automatic for the first year.
And again, I appreciate that because the intent is to form partnerships, not to punish. And, you know, other agenda items, I noticed that there's a list of mitigation fees that we collect. And I'm just curious, like, there's fire mitigation, et cetera. I'm not sure how much we collect on an annual basis, but is that something that we could look at? To, it's like $4,000, or you quoted in your narrative, about $4,000. Is that, are there other sources of income, like the mitigation, fire mitigation fees and things, that we could use to waive it in the future?
Not those specific ones.
Okay.
Those, all of our impact mitigation fees are based on required state, really tight little standards. We have to tie it exactly to a specific purpose and use those monies for a specific reason.
Okay.
And we charge those related to building permits. We have had some programs, Rebecca can probably jump in, that talks about business development and how we grant. And I'll let her explain how that might work with this.
So we did establish a grant for... We did a special events permit, and we did a grant associated with meeting those under certain circumstances in generally alliance with not-for-profits or community agencies. However, we also have in our budget, budget, like, business development fees or business, you know, or not, business grants. And we haven't specified in terms of what we've been working through, exactly what it is that we are seeing out there so we could build a program that would match with what those needs are out there. But that could be business expansion or code, you know, addressing code issues or anything like that. So that potentially could be something like that. But at this point, you know, it's, it should be fairly nominal in the first year, I would say. And the whole basis is really to, you know, best-case scenario is everyone would get a fee waiver just because they comply with the program going forward. And then we would develop that layer of information. And then we would have that information available on our website for business development, expansion, traction. So it will make its way up in terms of revenue generation over the course of development. But at this point, I think it'll be fairly immaterial. And then I think what'll end up happening is, or this is just how code compliance works, is as part of the ordinance, we do have inspections every six months for the fire marshal to go in. That's where we're, we're going to find some issues. And so we'll work with those respective property owners to work through those problems.
It also helps us establish a fee that's not based completely on...
Sure.
A gas. We'll actually have some track record to base it on.
I have a follow-up question on the grant. So the grant money would come from the general fund? That money was coming from the urban community fund?
So I have a question in terms of, if it's a vacant building, what is the code that it needs to be up to? So what I'm trying to ask is, so it's been vacant 10 years. What's the code that we're trying to make sure that it's up to? Or does that depend on what it could be purpose for and what it's purpose for?
So we're not going to go into a vacant building and assume there are all going to be restaurants and make them build to that code. We're mainly going to be looking for health and safety issues and things that are causing deterioration that might cause the entire building to harbor rats or perhaps flooding, that type of thing.
Or if someone's using it as a storage unit?
That is code violation.
Yep.
We would call it code violation.
So they're going to be mainly about health and safety issues or known public nuisance code that is what that is. We might also come across them as illegal. Just, we don't know what.
I will open it up to public comment. Is there any not in public? Rose, online? We will bring counsel. Your motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Councilmember Sharado, second by Councilmember Shemente.
Shemente?
Aye.
Brolio?
Aye.
Sharado?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D, discussion regarding mid-year 2024 budget and approval of resolution number 2413 for budget adjustments requiring City Council approval from Michelle Gonzalez.
I feel like I should be playing the praise right now.
Hello. So I'm here to present the mid-year, so it would be July through December. Where we're at in our budget overall, I gave you a report. But in terms of where we're at to date in the general fund, typically, tax revenues are lower at this time of year. We're going to see most of those come in third quarter, fourth quarter of the year. But I did a projection to see where we're projecting out based on historical. And we're already a little bit ahead of where we were last year. So that is not to be concerned about. Expenses are under budget. We're looking at about 46% or 48% of the budgets. We're right on target in the general fund. And we're seeing that trending also in our enterprise, our water, our sewer funds. They're matching up to whereabouts we are previous years. Another piece is that some of the internal budget, we didn't go over the bottom line. We kept the budget the same internally, but we needed to move some of the categories around. And that biggest part was within staffing. We noticed in police, fire, public works, We noticed in police, fire, public works, we had vacancies or we had employees on leave for budgeted positions. So we had savings in that salary account. But because we used staff to fill that, it resulted in overtime. So it was just line item, moving that. We had savings in some of the benefits. And we always planned for every position to be fully covered by benefits. But typically you'll have a savings by the end of the year just from people not utilizing the benefits or different costs. So overall, things are looking good with the city in terms of finances. Other category we saw in operating was with our computer technology. We noticed that we provided iPads or tablets for all of public works. And so that they could be in the field and having work orders. And it's all part of this transition with iWork. Well, there's an added cost to that that wasn't part of the original budget. Fortunately, we have savings in utilities and changes we made with copiers and whatnot. So we were able to move that around and stay within the original budget we presented to you. So really, we just have a few items that were originally not planned. We had some additional water testing and the equipment that we needed to have in place in our enterprise funds. And then, of course, at City Hall last year with storm, we had a terrible leak in the roof. And we were able this summer to get a company to come out and repair the roof. And we were able to cover 50% of those costs of our insurance. And we were hoping the other would go through FEMA, but we don't know. It's still out there. But for now, we do have money in the general fund, but that's part of what I'm asking tonight is to cover that second half of those expenses, to add that to our budget.
Michelle, council, is there any questions?
I, thank you, Michelle, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. In the 2018 strategic plan, it talked about the percent of the budget that came from like local property taxes. And I really believe like Rebecca, I have to get closer. I really believe like Rebecca shared, I think our new auditor.
Assessor.
Assessor, thank you. Yeah, assessor is working the Prop Eights. And I think you're seeing more tax dollars being generated. And that's going to be a good thing for all public agencies. But back then, the report indicated that approximately 24% of the regular operating revenues come from local property taxes. Is that still, you believe about 24% of our budget is property tax?
For property tax?
Yeah.
I think it's increased slightly.
Okay.
And we've even seen from this year to last year, we saw an increase of about 100,000 in property tax.
And it said like sales tax revenue was at 25%. So.
Right, and we're on target. The district tax, which is our local sales tax, we are seeing an increase in that this year.
And then they said back then TOT was, the transient occupancy tax was about 20%. So you're, that's about still, we get about 20% of our. Perfect, okay.
And on the, on the, the tax roll, so we knew when we were putting the budget together that it's probably going to be more than 2%. I think we put 2.5% just to be conservative. And we verified that in fact it's going to be 8.3%. That's where the roll, that's where 8.3%.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And so that's a pretty significant increase over what we had budgeted. We're also seeing trends on the sales tax where it's, it's just trending higher. Not so much on the Bradley Burn side, that's staying fairly, fairly stable. Little, little late, itty-bitty increase, but, but stable. But on the district tax, which is our 0.5% that was passed in 2018, that is substantially increasing.
So do you know how many Prop Eights still exist in the City of Angels? Because I know that back in '08, '09, she would do whole subdivisions and.
Yeah. We'd have to check with the assessor, but I don't believe there's that many. So she worked pretty, Laurie worked pretty hard to get all of those up to date. And then there was quite a backlog of commercial properties, so she's working on that.
Good, good. You know, one of the things that the reports mentioned over and over again is, and just like, and I really appreciated the newsletter, is that I don't think we, and it's hard sometimes to chew on horn, but we're fiscally solvent. And I think, and I appreciate what you do, Michelle, and I appreciate your leadership. And I think we need to say that so the public knows that we are fiscally solvent. And it looks like, you know, we'll be able to continue doing what we're doing into the future. I mean, there's always something that could happen, but, but we are fiscally solvent. And I think that's important for folks to hear and understand.
I just, I had a couple of comments just in some of the details, and so I don't know if it's worth going into. It's just, because at the end of the document, it's like all evened out anyway. So I know that we went over dramatically in like computer maintenance software lease stuff for admin. But then, you know, you see a decrease in an equally big number on the other side. So I don't know if that's right going into detail because it kind of counterbalances itself.
We had savings and.
Yeah.
And if you recall, you know, as we've had conversations about, you know, what we would like to contract, you know, we would like to go into contract with this particular software or that particular software. Part of that conversation would be, well, we can afford it, we can afford the outlay this year because we also happen to identify that we're not going to be paying banking charges anymore.
Yeah.
Or we're redoing our copier contracts. So we're not going to have the copy charges anymore. So wherever we could, we would try to find, you know, an expenditure that we're going to not have anymore. We're going to drastically cut it because we renegotiated or we changed vendors or whatever it is. And so we're going to have that outlay, but there's always that first year like buy-in on some of those software licenses. And then you just got to.
It really, it's not, I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, it's not uncommon to move, within a particular budget, move money around out of one category that you're not spending as much. You move it to something that you do. Michelle, do you sit down with all of our directors like Chris and work on his budget? Or how does that budget development piece work?
Correct. And so for mid-year budget, I met with each one of them. And we went over not only doing projections, but looking at each line item, talking about what occurred this year. And we looked at some of the detail that caused these accounts to go over. And then also talk about projections. So what are they going to need to get through the year? We'll do the same thing in a few months. We're going to meet one-on-one and start developing their budgets for next year. Already asked them to start thinking about what they need. If I see a document that comes across, it's not something we're going to spend right now, I'm throwing it in the folder so that when we have that time, we have all that information there to try to plan. And also with what Carolyn had said with the, the one time or the 56,000 or whatnot that we saw that we were overrunning some of the computer costs, some of that is one time. So we're paying a consultant to set up all of these iPads or computers, laptops and whatnot. There's a cost for them to set it up for the city's protocols, to make sure everything's secure, log all the software. So those costs won't be reoccurring every year.
When you're looking at budget, this is just the preparedness piece of me in my day job, just having some redundancies, especially like with Chris and his department, chemicals, supply chain issues. Do we ever budget for that kind of stuff? Like do you, I'm just putting that, I'm just going to put that pin in right there. Because I know, you know, when I am talking to FEMA and other agencies, they do talk about like, we might see some supply chain issues in the near future. And make sure you have things on hand just in case you get to crunch and you don't, you know, you can't get what you need. So I just want to make sure that since we are solvent and we aren't, you know, I'm having to live paycheck to paycheck that we have some of that stuff in place.
Well, and that was something exactly with the chemicals, Chris and I were looking at. Because in one category, we were right on budget, another one, we were underspent. So we even went in to look at, did you order everything? Did it get allocated correctly? Did they split it correctly? And Bill, and all of it was correct. It was just sort of trending different than he had predicted. So we were to answer some of those questions. And then now he knows, okay, I have some money here in chemicals that I budgeted in. So I know we can place this next order and whatnot. So those are the kind of conversations we're having.
And I would say this year has been the first year they've been able to. And so it's been really hard for them, you know. I still would have staff come in and go, that pump broke, but maybe we should just go send it out. And then we could try, trying to figure out how to eat something or out. And so, you know, that's when we're having the conversation of, well, how many times do these go out? How many pumps do we have out there? Maybe we need to have one on the shelf. So that has been a change in methodology and a change in operations. And it's been hard to get, they've just been so, don't spend anything for so many years.
Double gum and popsicles.
Correct. That, I mean, we're still very mindful of it, but where it makes sense, we definitely want to make sure that that's happening so that we're not, we're not exposing ourselves to more risk than.
Great.
And thinking forward, I know Rebecca had had a conversation with Chris about starting to purchase the smart meters, even though we haven't installed them. Why are we buying the old style when we know this is something we want to go to? And so same thing, you know, Dave came into my office, are you sure I can place this? Are you sure, you know? And so it's just changing that mindset and thinking forward.
What was the overall budget for the year, 23?
I believe so.
Twenty, I don't know.
It's in the.
It's all 23 million, something, right? And we're at mid-year and we're $88,000 over with a roof, IT and staffing. Hopefully we get some money back from FEMA on that, but who knows when. This would be nice. So that number actually even could be less. So I would just say good job to Chris and Fire Department and everybody. Pretty darn good. Thank you all.
And our windows are not leaking for the first time.
So Rebecca, did we ever apply for the CPBA grant?
The, the last round for last year, no.
This year, we're working on the application with Emily to replace some lighting. So we are going to apply.
Lights actually here, so. Yeah, yeah. But for last year, no, we did not. We worked with. Yes.
All right, any other public comments or questions? Public comment, is there any public comment on this item? Online?
No.
All right, well, it's like we are to bring this back from.
So.
Second. First, I'm going to bring back Carolyn and Cheryl.
Shemante.
Aye.
Rolle.
Aye.
Schrato.
Aye.
Ampada.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item E, strategic plan update discussion and direction, Rebecca and Colin.
Okay, so, you know, when we adopted the 2023 strategic plan, mission and all that great stuff, part of that conversation was bringing back for mid-year to discuss where we made progress and get direction from council in terms of next steps. So this will be the first time that staff have brought this back to City Council. So as you all call, this is our vision statement. And so a lot of what we've tried to do is to make sure that we are constantly putting this in front of everybody's eyes. So that's why it's on your wall. We've put the mission and the vision on our agendas. We have it on our website. We've created the little quick cards. So as much as making this information help to staff and council and the public, it helps them feel like we've got some direction, which is all, all good. So the goals and objectives for today is to overview of the strategic plan. And I gave that information as part of this council pocket. So what I did is I combined the recommendations that were in the 2018 document and the 2023 document. I'm going to give you just a kind of high-level, quick status update where we're at in getting those recommendations completed. Discussing budget and planning implications or considerations, any adjustments and recommendations that you might have or that we might have, and then also what type of stakeholder engagement we want to see going forward. So as I said, there were really two defining strategic planning documents. One was in 2018, which focused on organizational review, budget stabilization, contextual things. And then the 2023, that really addressed kind of taking the information and the progress that had happened in the 2018, from that 2018 document, and then identifying, well, so what are, what, what, what do you want to do? What are your objectives? What are your goals? What types of policies do we need to have in play? And so we spent a lot of time in 2023 going through all of that and fine tuning it. And if you recall, we had a couple pretty lengthy workshops to narrow that down. And then we, for the most part, developed our 23, 24 budget based on those, on those objectives. So in terms of the 2018 focus, what came about of that? So if you recall, in 2018, there, we were not in the best financial state. And so it was determined through revenue review at the time that we really needed to figure out some sort of local control over our own revenue destiny, if you will. So it was decided to put two initiatives on the ballot. One was the transient occupancy tax increase and one was the district sales tax increase, both of which passed. And then there was discussion about consolidation of city facilities with an emphasis on the museum. And so the museum was, ultimately was contracted out for the CVB. And then the CVB was moved from where the pickle porch is to the museum. What I think is interesting is I don't think anyone really contemplated what the unintended benefits of moving the CVB to the museum site would be. And it has really helped the museum because you are just getting people that are just going to the visitor center who just also happen to be visiting the museum. And so they kind of get them in and then they felt the. Which is really, really great. And so they've been able to generate quite a bit of income merely from the fact of dual partnership there. And then it was looking at making sure that we're focusing on economic development and then investing in staff and, and resources. And that was all fine and good, and then 2020 came along. So the 2023 focuses were really, let's get down to honing in on the policies that are needed, defining those goals and objectives and what those look like. And so we aligned elements within the general plan to those goals and objectives, and then identifying long-term planning pathways. So where are we at? We have completed eight of the recommendations that were in your packet. 19 are in some level of progress and six have not been started yet. So the bulk of the recommendations, those all started to happen in 2022. The two major items that happened pre-2022 were that transient occupancy tax increase and the district tax increase. Everything else has really happened in 2022 because we were just kind of in a stalemate because of COVID. So everything remained very static. So the investments that we made, you know, high input on technology, a lot of training, a lot of identifying equipment that was either missing or that was failing. We looked at our consulting contracts, were we getting the best services? In some cases, we went back out for RFP, we changed our consulting contracts. We did some internal organizational reviews and reorganized some things. What didn't make sense to be, you know, in this sub-department versus that sub-department? And a really big one was creating a primary and finance director. That was a major goal that was identified in 2018 and, you know, continued through 2023 to make sure that that was front and center. Just high level, what have we done with finance? It's a lot more transparency. It's a lot more accountability. It's a lot more giving you information. We've invested in technology that helps the, you know, finance as well as kind of help departments have a better understanding, engage on their budgets. We've invested in iWork, which iWork we're using for code compliance. We're using for service requests. We're using for mapping where all of our infrastructure is. We use it for permitting process. And it has really helped streamline that entire process. And it has really helped streamline that entire process, um, whether it's business licenses, um, all the way to, uh, a plane application. Um, we are now moving towards, um, our G I S. We have no internal G I S capability. That stopped probably when our last engineering technician left, which would have been five, yeah, years ago. Um, so, or, or at least, so that's a big gaping hole that we have. So we are investing some money in there right now. Um, but then we thought, you know, the, the, you know, upgrades for the departments just to help them operate in a better way. So whether it was for the police department, the fire department, we, we did our entire network, which was, um, not working. And, um, I had a lot of concerns in terms of cybersecurity. We had, uh, invested in I B R, which was a way that we can reach out to all of our, uh, customers if there's an emergency. Um, and then a lot of the things that we invested in, a lot of law enforcement, technology and equipment are things that we, um, you know, he's identified for at least five years, but we just couldn't, couldn't get to it. Um, we have lots of policies that we've implemented, whether it was reserve policies, purchasing policies, um, customer assistance policies, um, and then in terms of C I P, we've really pushed hard to try to dust off those capital improvement projects and get them moving. Um, you know, some of these projects take two years to get to design, if not longer. And so it may not look like they're doing anything, but there is a lot of, um, work that's happening in the background. So Booster Way, you will be seeing that coming, I would think, on the next meeting, um, for approval for us to go out for R F P for construction. And if you'll call Booster Way is the bottleneck that's needed for, uh, part of the Habitat working that the project. And then in terms of economic development, the foundry lane, uh, state route for easement, um, the foundry lane property swap. We've got downtown beautification projects. I'm working with council of governments on, uh, electric vehicle planning so that we can align grant funding with, uh, uh, plans for E V s- uh, stations within the city. We've got the annexation planning that we're working on right now. We did the Hobbin Shop, which was the shop local program, the business grants, I talked about G I S land with database. Um, the community, the commercial vacant property ordinance was really huge for us. Um, and, you know, a lot of other things, but it's important to understand a lot of resources and staff. Um, time and energy went into these things and a lot of it has happened in the last, you know, year and a half. So, um, you know, council member Shamente, you had asked, you know, how much web traffic do we get? So we had a non-functioning website and so we completely revamped it. I would say we got finished with it in two thousand twenty two, early two thousand twenty three. So we started tracking, um, through analytics the end of this last year. Because that was another, uh, thing that we needed added to it. So we have about two thousand visitors to our website right now. And, um, we find our homepage, which is where we put a lot of just immediate access to information is obviously our most highly visited page. And we have about two hundred and thirty nine, um, that just go to Utica Park. And the, the latest trending story was the Utica Park trenching. But I think it was so high because we aligned that also with the press release that we put out, um, to all of the press agencies. And then two hundred and nine, um, recently went to the city council. And we see that spike happen because we push that information out on Facebook, we push it out on Constant Contact. And so we'll see an increase in visitorship based on other, um, points of outreach. And then we utilize Constant Contact. So we started using Constant Contact in the mid-two thousand twenty three, there or so last year. We have a total of five hundred and eighty-one contacts. We have a really high email open rate. This is remarkably high. Um, you don't generally see this. And, um, we've had about thirty new subscribers in the last thirty days. I work pretty hard to try to find other areas where we can put the Q R code for the general newsletter or for the Utica Park newsletter. Um, and so we're really trying to engage with everyone out there to, to, to get access to information. We, of the five hundred and eighty-one, um, just, just over half are considered highly engaged, which means they are regularly opening everything we send them and they're reading everything that they're getting. Um, and so it's a great avenue for us to get information out that we want and then they will then share that information with others. So in terms of, um, budget and planning considerations for twenty four, twenty five. We, uh, and this was a hard pill for you guys to swallow and, and Alvin, um, I think had the hardest time of this one. Uh, we asked you to spend seven hundred fifty-six thousand dollars more than what was coming. That was the reality. And these were on one-time costs. And all of these investments were tied to a priority goal and objective that was identified in the strategic plan. And they've all paid off. And so when we're looking at twenty four, twenty five, we don't want to lose the momentum that we gained. And, you know, staff are really positive and feeling really positive, some of the things that we've been able to put into place because, um, I just don't think that they thought in a million years, we were gonna actually be able to get it done. So we do have some operational stampings. Uh, we need to focus on economic development with, um, business and residential development attraction. And we are doing some of that, but we need to, to, to do more of it. Um, we need to focus on our master plans and our annexation plans for long-range development. And we need to look at our infrastructure investments and our staffing models. And then, um, I've heard this brought up numerous times and you're absolutely correct. We need to focus on a facility plan. So staff have asked if they can come up and say a few words that are specific to their particular, uh, departments. So Crystal Flynn loves public speaking. And so you can hear a few words from Kim and then, um, uh, Chief Roraba has also asked. Um, and police are, are, police are pretty happy, um, started moving to Joe. Uh, but the, the two that really wanted to speak for, uh, public works, which would be public works field as well as treatment and then, uh, fire. Take it away.
Good evening. Uh, behind you is, is basically your public works. These are the guys that are, you know, out there during storms, keeping the storm drain cleared. Uh, cleaning up fallen down trees, basically responding to any water or wastewater or emergencies that fell there. And I just wanted to, to show you your team. So what does public works do? They ensure seamless operation, upkeep, uh, vital infrastructure, including the maintenance of thirty-two miles of water distribution pipe, twenty-two miles of gravity sewer and four point five for the main sewer. They oversee and manage approximately thirty-one miles of road, guarantee safe and effective travel for our community. They maintain three parks as well as key buildings in the city, like City Hall, Comptonville School and the museum. Uh, they regularly clean the downtown sidewalks, remove the green from the ditches and keep trash throughout the city. Every month they read all the water meters in the city. It takes them three days and that's the whole staff to go out and manually read each meter. That's not including having to go back out and do re-reads when numbers aren't giant. And then they have to go back out and do order ears for studdies. And if they're, if those bills aren't paid, then they have to go out and shut off the meters. And from then, once the bill's paid, it's up a lot of time. Next slide.
Um, so this one is kind of hard to read. Public Works staff has been the same as far as staff can recall.
So for as long as I've been, which was nineteen years, um, plus. Our public works staff is not moving at all. There's literally the same stakes that have been guys that, you know, it has not grown. But we added lots of tasks for them over the years. And so really, I'm, I'm continuously under staff to get the additional work done. So, you know, one of the things that I, one city home to contemplate is that if we're gonna continue adding trails, additional park, things like that, we need to contemplate adding staff also. That's right. So the problems that we're facing is basically employee retention. We have a deficiency in institutional knowledge out there. I've got a lot of new staff. They, they don't know our systems. Yes, they have a general education in what we do. But they don't know our systems. So every time I lose somebody, I lose the knowledge that we have instilled in them over time. And I have to start fresh. So that, that's a big loss to us. That, that takes the experienced guys out of the, out of getting the work done that needs to be completed and putting them into a constant train. So uh, we covered the growth and not adding staff. So we're adding more work to these same guys and, and not taking any away. And so they're feeling like they can't get anything done. They're always feeling like they're behind and it's, it's not really good from now. So, um, let's see, I can't read.
One requires same certification.
Okay, so these guys all have to have the same certification, like the guys at C C W D doing the same job. It's the exact same certification. They're out there having to take the classes, take the tests. But they're way underpaid compared to other districts in North Eric. And that's, that's another thing we're facing, why I keep losing people. And then our average longevity of, of, of people that work here went, literally, just in the past five years, went from an average of ten years down to two. And so these guys are out there doing overtime like crazy because they can't keep up with the workload. It costs more to train them now than it ever has in the past. Um, these guys are having to move out of the area because they can't afford to live here. So it increases their response times to emergency calls. Um, lack of experience is still, like I said. I have to constantly retrain. Currently, you know, for the workload that they have, they are understaffed. And the more we add to it, the further we get away from being full staff.
Can I just add one thing before you end?
Sure.
Um, the public works employees that we, that we have up there, one of those is an extra hire. He's a part-time employee.
So this is, this is your treatment team. These are the guys that make your drinking water safe and treat your wastewater. Next slide. So they operate and oversee the city's bi-water treatment plant, wastewater plant, and spray those facilities, ensuring the delivery of clean water and effective waste management per regulation. Maintenance of all equipment within each treatment plant guarantee, they may, uh, sorry. They maintain all the equipment in the treatment plant, guaranteeing operational functionality and longevity. Demonstrate technical expertise by conducting thorough repairs on pumps, motors and electrical equipment. Contributing to the seamless operation of our treatment facilities. Next slide. So much like the first program with public works, we're, we're facing the same challenges here. You know? We, we don't have, we have, when I first started here, we had uh, six operators plus a chief. We're down now to where I'm doing double duty as a public work superintendent and the chief. And I've got four operators. And I know I keep. We're, we're really understaffed. I barely can cover vacations and sick time and things like that. So right now, when I have guys that can't make it in, say, Thursday or Friday, I've gotta cover a, a, a plan. You know, I've gotta stop what I'm doing to go take care of that them. So, you know, I'm happy to do so, but it can't go on forever. And that, that's basically what I wanna get across tonight. Um, the, the challenge, uh, you know, it, it's the same thing, retaining employees, you know, it's constant retraining. They don't know our system. Yes, they have the certificates. They have a good overview of what the job is, but they're not familiar, familiar with our systems and our, you know, our plans. So you have to retrain them.
I, I think just one addition on that because I see it when they come in covered with whatever they're covered with. Um, we have is to stand that in some places it's over fifty years old. And so when, in my son works on the, uh, in the field staff and he'll come home and tell me all sorts of weird stories. But, you know, one, i- it's not like, it's not common. So you can have a, a, a line that has to be replaced. Well, it's completely covered in asphalt. It's, it's asphalt line. And then another one isn't. And another one is, you know, all these different materials. So each time they're opening up Pandora's box in terms of how they need to repair it. And so each, they, they have to understand that. So when they're, when they're real brain, Chris is gonna have to go out and get on site or Dave's gonna have to go out and go on site because they've never seen an asphalt, um, wrapped line. And which, that's a risk to us, right? Because there is particular P P E that they need to be wearing. Um, they, they need to handle it in a certain way. And that's where Rose and I get a little bit of, um, heartburn because there is a true risk exposure, uh, because, and, and it, it's not necessarily documented either. So, you know, that's part of the G I S and the mapping is trying to get all of this underground infrastructure mapped. So it's clear what it's made out of before they dig it up and then try to go and deal with it.
So, you know, like I said, much again, it's, it's, it's pretty much the same thing. Um, you know, these guys, they hold the same certificates as any operator at any facility in the state. Just because we're a smaller agency doesn't change their job. Their job as an operator is just like any operator anywhere in the state. So trying to explain to them that we're small, so we, we're not gonna pay you as much as you make somewhere else, doesn't really matter. So you know, there, there's a lot of frustration within our staff that, you know, why don't we get anything but everybody? Our job is the same. You know, larger agencies just means you need more people. It doesn't mean that the job change.
Chris, what's our timeline in terms of losing generational knowledge? Obviously, we's getting.
Oh, we've, we've lost it.
I mean, but what we have left of it.
Oh, Dave's meeting.
You got Dave, you and.
And I'm, I'm probably around five, so.
Yeah.
Um, and like I said, most of my staff are two years in and left.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so not very long. Um, same thing, overtime, overtime's crazy. They, they come out in the storms. They have to deal with the I N I issues and, you know, tanks overflowing and things like that. Um, some of these guys will end up spending the night there because that's just what the job requires. Uh, but if we had more staff, I could spread it out a little more evenly. Um, cost more to train these guys. And the more we're doing it, the more it's costing us. Um, same thing, increased response times. None of my guys, I, I have one guy that lives close to Innes camp. The rest of them all either live in Palomino County, Copperupolis or San Andreas. None of you, none of you can afford to live here. Um, they, they, for the lack of experience and skills, I mean, they have to be taught this stuff. They're, they're not just gonna come in from any plant to be able to do it. Uh, and like I said, we're, we're currently understaffed. I, I, you know, compared to when I started here, we're, we're two people down the trip on the tree, so.
So this was identified in our. So this was identified in our master plans, um, and you'll see it, you, you all have copies of the, of the water master plan, the wastewater master plan. And so in the twenty thirteen, um, it identified in the water master plan that we are twenty percent under comparable water per years. And in the twenty twelve wastewater master plan, it didn't give a specific of a percentage, but it just stated that they don't provide coverage for vacation.
So I, I, I can understand general fund expenditures, but the enterprise fund has access. You know, our, our rate payers, there's an assumption that they're paying to have staff fully funded. What's been the issue with not moving forward and staffing the way we need to staff since there is that excess there?
I, I, I just.
Is it direction from us?
Direction from council, yeah. I, I would say, just in looking historically, um, it was, it was money. I think there was a little bit of a misnomer, and I've seen this happen at the county as well, where they go, oh, we need a ten percent budget reduction. Well, they really refer to the general fund. They don't refer to everyone. And so I, I've seen it happen there as well, where they want the entire county to take a ten percent hit. Well, it just doesn't make sense in certain departments because they're funded different. Uh, so I, I don't know if it was part of that, um, but I just, I do know, uh, you know, when this happened, when, when the loss of these two treatment operators happened, it seemed to align probably with the rate recession. Um, you also have to remember, and I, I went over this, I did a presentation. Our rates had stayed the same since two thousand and six.
Stay flat.
You have no change in your rates from two thousand and six through twenty eighteen. So twenty nineteen, I think, was the first time. And then you have to build up because it's, it's, it's not like you're ready to go and you're one. And then twenty one happens, then it's COVID, and then you're like, well, our, and we had this issue at C C W D. We didn't know, like, is everyone going to stop paying their bill? Are they going to have a cash flow issue? So, I mean, I would say this is probably the first year that I could like, legitimate, look everyone in the face and say, I promise, we're okay, we're good. There's light at the end of the tunnel, there's actually a rainbow. Um, and I think historically, at least as this council has been on, has not been the case. I think it's been a, a little bit of a bumpy road.
Well, I think it goes with capital improvement projects also. You know, I'm not sure we're going to talk about that tonight, but it was, it is a topic I'd like to talk about.
And I think that has been the biggest issue when we've sat down because most of the capital projects are with enterprise that we have.
Right.
Um, and sitting down and trying to figure out, like, why haven't any of these been happening? And there just wasn't the bandwidth to do it. There's no staffing to get hold of it. And so, um, this has been the first time where we've been able to try to somewhat get some stability, but we've had to get really creative in higher.
I, I just, I just hope that when we're letting contracts out to our engineers for the scope of the job, we're also attaching a timeline. Cause my concern is those dollars that we recently lost that were swept and we're trying to get back may have been because we didn't, our engineers didn't provide us with the necessary information in a timely manner in order for us to move forward to that grant. So I think we need to be mindful of that when we let a contract, what the scope of it is and hold them to the timeline of that contract.
Right, yeah.
So I, I, I do believe there's a difference between the general fund and this enterprise fund. And, you know, maybe it's something the finance committee can look at, or we can look at our council, but, um, it doesn't make sense to continue to collect the fees that we're collecting and not provide that service back. And, and I appreciate we're going to go back to automated, automated meter readers and things like that. But, you know, it, especially in Chris's and the wastewater and wastewater, it takes folks for certificates, takes people spending time. And, um, I don't want City of Angels to have a training ground for folks, you know, um. And I am concerned, you know, I, I love to have a salary schedule and, and it's something that we should talk about. Um, because I think people need to be able to make a, a decent living wage. And, and it's a shame that they can go work in a fast food restaurant and make more money than they can for the City of Angels. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed, uh, down the road. I'm sorry, I, I just want to off a couple of bit on my tangent.
That's okay, now I actually, this is the end of my present audience, so if you have any questions for me.
So how many, I, I, um, so how many, um, which more do you, you have four full-time and yourself?
So, yes, I have myself and, and five. Um, well, let's see, no. No, myself and four.
Four, right?
No, five.
You have five total?
So, but the problem is, uh, Dave, one of our newest members, uh, he's, he's a no I T. He's an operator in training, he has no circumfit, so literally he has to be under supervision by either myself or Caleb or Josh.
Right.
We're the only three that can supervise him. Um, Caleb, Caleb right now is working towards getting his grade three in water. Um, once he does that, he is the one I'm going to probably groom to become the chief plant operator. So I'm no longer doing double duty. But that also being the chief takes him out of also doing operations. So technically for that to happen, I, I'm, I'm one guy short. One.
One operator.
Blood operator, to make, just to make that scenario work. But like I said, when I started here, you had a chief and six operators. And then when, when, uh, Carol Wolf left, and I can't remember, I think, I want to say it was around two thousand eight, two thousand nine, they eliminated Utica Bay. Okay, so we lost the chief. Our next highest certified guy bumped up and became what we call the senior supervisor. But they eliminated the chief position. And then when he left, we reestablished the chief position and then Aaron Randy came on board. Um, when Aaron passed away, we didn't, I jumped up into his position, I moved up, but we didn't backfill my position. So we lost a position there, and that's how we lost the two positions. And we have not filled any.
And then on the public works team, that is, it's, it's a, it's a combination of general fund, water, and wastewater. And so that's why we call them distribution collection workers. So.
Depending on where they go.
For that, so they time.
We try to rotate them so that we're always cross-training. But, you know, I think the problem is, you know, we've got, you know, the staff here, but Dave, who is the public works foreman, he for all intents and purposes acts as a line staff person because we just, we don't have a choice. And so distribution, collection activities, whether it's water or wastewater, those are always going to take precedence over a general fund activity every single time. Because if there is a water lane break, then we have to deal with it. There's sewer main break, we have to deal with it. If the park needs to be mowed, it's always going to lose compared to the water line or the sewer line. So what happens is we just are always stealing from the general fund, uh, hours. We paid for them out of water and wastewater, but the general funds always coming up short. And then the problem is there's a lot of maintenance that has to happen on all of this underground infrastructure. And we need to get that scheduled, but we don't have someone who can take a hat off from day to day to sit down and actually schedule everything, which that was the purpose of the foreman. So, you know, Chris and I have talked about this as well, is it makes sense to have two, two distribution, collection that would be dedicated to general fund, which is what they're supposed to do, two that are dedicated to sewer, two that are dedicated to water, and then you would have a foreman. We're just short one body. And if we did that, I don't think there would be a change actually in the general fund because we do budget for two F T Es in the general fund. We just can't ever, we just don't have sufficient hours to be able to actually work them. So we take their hours and we put them over water and wastewater because we're just short. So we're always going to get pushed on that side. So we're kind of, you know, doing the dance where we need to. And then you guys are getting frustrated because the weed bucket didn't happen or the park, you know, whatever's in the corner, whatever it is. Um, so that, that, that is an area, but again, it's not, it, it's not going to pencil out as a general fund impact so much as it's going to again be on the water and wastewater side. But it's taken us this long to really kind of like pull everything back to figure out what, what's not working and why isn't it working? Is it not working because we don't have the system in place? Is it not working because you didn't have that equipment? Is it not working, you know, whatever? And it's, it's taken a little bit of time for us to kind of really methodically look at it and not make a decision too quickly in terms of what that solution would be. So are we looking at next year's budget, then fixing this, coming to the table with, with a solution on this?
Yes. You know, and Alvin has said it many times, you know, and when we talk about replacing the garbage cans downtown or we add a part. I mean, we're adding all this stuff, I mean, you can't, if you're going to add it and spend taxpayer dollars, then we need to be able to maintain it and figure out a way to maintain it. And maybe that's a conversation at some point that we probably need to have as a council. Um, you know, are there other ways to manage Utica Park?
Have a community group take that over, like in Murphy's or something.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they.
That's all stuff we've looked at.
Right, so.
Yeah, yep. But it's just something that, you know, we're, we need to get our heads slightly above water to be able to really step back and look at it.
So I'll play off of what Rebecca said for a second, and I'll just go here. I know Joel's going to go and other people too. So I think we've done a pretty good job, like when I look over this, the, the report, um, you know, there was themes in here like, uh, creating community cohesion, uh, cohesiveness, uh, Old Town Greenhorn Ranches. I think we're working on that very well. Uh, Ivan three was establishing appropriate, appropriate staffing levels. I have a little footnote in here that I put in, and I said, I think we've accomplished that at the city hall level pretty well. Um, I said, we're just missing a few more needed, oh, and, you know, the fire department, we added a, a position there. We're trying with police like crazy, um, with all sorts of fun, wacky ways to get people there too. Um, but I, I think we need a few more positions needed at, at the outside plant level is what I called it. Um, to get that started and then get on the C I P projects, we can do those things. But right now, you just, you need like three or four, you know what I mean? And, and I'm just, I'm just throwing a number out there, but that was one of my things. Um, we did eliminate, uh, theme four was eliminate deficit spending, strength in design, and understand reserves. We've done that very well, investing in infrastructure, um, preserving small town cultural advantages, I think we're working at. Municipal governance is, I see Joel here tonight, and you, everybody's been working really well there. Um, finding balance between wealth creation through taxation versus and economic development. We, like you talked about, we, uh, water sewer rate hasn't been increased in nine years, thirteen years. Um, you know, it's kind of hard to hire there. We had COVID in there. Um, we've had some changes, we've been digging and clawing, we got I T in finally. So there's just, there's some really good things that have happened there. Um, oh, what else was in here? And you brought up, uh, overcoming challenges in here regarding access to historical downtown and traffic circulation. I think that, uh, looking at annexation, the roundabout, um,
Oh, no.
Forty-nine bypass, foundry lane extension, those are all amazing things that are coming that will help all this, so.
And the nice part is, they are, they are coming. And, and it's not like we're talking about what they could be. Like, we actually can see that, that progress is right, right there.
Yes.
And, um, and so I'm, I'm, I feel very, very positive, the trajectory of the city. Um, I, I think, you know, I think we can all see, I think staff can finally see. Uh, so like I said, it's just a matter of not losing, um, that momentum and making sure we're just going down in that same, same direction, that same path.
For me, I think the, the, the one last thing I'll say is just that generational thing that was brought up about, um, I'll use kitsch, right, yeah. I, I'll use like Kitchell, the guy's been here forever. Um, you know, you've been here seventeen plus years. Um, yeah, there's, there's just, there's a lot of information that you guys have that will take years to get back. Uh, so.
Before we start getting into too many side discussions, I know we're on slide twenty-five forty-one.
No.
And so I'd like, and then we can get into, really getting into the discussion of it. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it's actually, can we take a ten minute break? Yep. All right, we will turn it over to Rebecca.
Hold on, hold on.
One second.
He's going to turn you down now.
Going to turn you down.
Uh, so we have a chief. Sorry, so, uh, so we have chief Roarlaw to talk about the city fire department.
You're awesome.
Madam vice mayor, city council, city administrator, public, uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak a little bit today. Uh, I'm going to pretty much have some of the stuff that, uh, Chris was talking about here. Uh, so what I want to talk about is just, uh, as we're moving forward for budget, share with you some considerations that I'll be bringing up with Rebecca as we move forward for budget to try to make some adjustments within the part of, if possible. So as you're looking at our people up there, uh, you can see we have eleven. It's important to understand that only two of those people are working on a fire engine at any given time. So the bottom, the bottom line there are all part-time firefighters and they're all making minimum wage. So you're going to hear the discussion about that here moving forward. Um, and if you don't know, the way it works is that the red hats there, Billy Davis, Blake Quavis, and Lance Fenter are, are company officers that are on, there are three full-time line officers that we have. Everybody else on the fire engine is part-time, just so we understand that. And, uh, and I'll explain that a little more as we move forward. Uh, I, I do want to share that, you know, these guys up there are willing to risk their life. I don't say that lightly, I've been in the business for forty years, I've seen firefighters die. I did CPR on firefighters on calls and, uh, the job is a very hazardous job. I know calls sometimes up here, the big calls are, uh, infrequent, but they're extremely high risk. We can have the biggest call, that'd be on CNN and Fox in five minutes from now, could happen up here. So we need to understand that they're willing to do that. They also have a huge occupational hazard, we know that, we, everybody knows there's a situation that's going on right now, I'm not going to get into that. But they're exposed to everything from A to Z on a regular basis, no matter how much times we try to put on our S C B As and stuff like that. There could be a call where you show up on, you're not geared up yet, you don't know what's going on, the wind shift, things change, guys working out the fire trucks, smokes over there, wind changes, boom. It only takes one particle, one particular, small amount to cause cancer. So you guys all know probably the, one of the biggest causes of death in firefighters is cancer. Expected life, life expectancy is like five years after you retire, it's pretty short. Um, and it's not just the cancer stuff, it's also respiratory. It's stuff where, you know, we walk into a scene and someone has a communicable disease, we didn't know about it, or something happens, or you walk into Foothill Village, or something's been spread COVID twenty-seven, whatever, there's just all those things that can happen. So they really do put their life at risk, they're willing to do that for you. It's amazing to me that the bottom five people are willing to do that at minimum wage. So when we're talking about, you know, value to your community and stuff like that, and what they do, it's probably a.
That's okay.
It's all, it's all.
Yeah.
You know, they're willing to do those things at minimum wage. And when we talk about value to employees, you know, if I'm working at minimum wage in Starbucks and Round Table and Subway are making plus twenty now, some of them, cashiers, we can just go on and on. So I think that's something that we should address. Is it appropriate for a firefighter that has to have all these, you know, they go to school for six months in an academy, then they have to go to school for four to five months to be an E M T. Then they have to take these twenty-six classes, then they have eleven mandatory classes a year, then they have training on addition to that for wildfire, it just goes on and on and on. And it's important to know that your firefighters have to do everything. that your firefighters have to do everything from A to Z, and I don't say that lightly again. When nine-one-one is called and it's not necessarily a police or ambulance call, the fire department always gets the call. I mean, you get whatever, snake removal. I mean, I could go on and on. Help with a pet, this, that. I mean, I could just go on and on about packs of calls that we run. So they're expected to be, you know, both like jack of all trades, be able to go there, be nice to the people and be helpful and try to figure out some sort of solution for their problem. So just starting off with that, um, and I'll expand on that in a minute. I can't see that over there. So just a little, some little bit of information there. Uh, we provide all risk and what I mean for that is we do everything in emergency services, everything from A to Z, from your basic medical call, vehicle crashes. Uh, and there's extrication involved. It's just, it goes on and on and on. Um, we also provide extensive fire prevention and public education. I want to talk a little bit about call volume changes. You know, in two thousand sixteen, we responded about six hundred and eighty-eight calls. In two thousand twenty-three, we're up to twelve twenty-two. So it's almost double. So we're running about four calls a day and like, you know, it's like a slow station in a busy city. That's about right. And uh hold on there. You know, so that's going on and it's, and, and since I've been here, I've been here for about eight and a half years. The staffing on the fire engine hasn't changed since I've been here. Also, entry level fire position has been at minimum wage ever since I've been here. When I started here, I think it was ten bucks an hour. Now we're up to sixteen bucks an hour. Uh, and then our pay scale is all reflective off of that entry level position. So all the different steps are baked up of that, that position. Majority of our calls are EMS, as you guys know, about ninety percent, something that I'll bring in forward, you know, as we move through the budget stuff. Is as your fire chief, if I know that nine percent of our calls are emergency medical calls, it's my job to try to figure out what can we do to provide better service to the community on that. So I will be entertaining ideas about how maybe we could do a paramedic program. Uh, there's multiple options on that. I started a paramedic program in Copper and designed that whole thing, whatever. But that's something that we'll bring up as we move forward. Uh, we did have twenty-seven fires. I'm going to show you a short video in a little bit about a fire that we were just on. Again, our fire engine staff all days of the year, but we only have two firefighters on that rig. So that's, that's.
Let me ask you a question. How do you, when you, just so only two firefighters respond to a fire?
If it's in the City of Angels camp, you'll get two firefighters on the fire engine that respond from the city. There could be other fire trucks coming in from other areas. Um, but in the city, the first initial response is two people. Four days of the week, you'll get probably Nate or Mark that will respond with them to be what we call the duty officer to oversee that call. And then sixty hours a week, we try to figure out how we can cover it to have that extra person there.
So you have the engineer and then you have a firefighter. And so are there any times when a firefighter goes into a building, I'll buy?
Now, that's one thing that we're lacking. It's unfortunate to say that. The NFPA standard is to have four people on a fire engine. There's a reason why it's there. The, the four people on the fire engine rule is that we show up at your house and there's a fire, that initial engine can go to work right away. I'm dictated by law of state of California, federal law, OSHA, that I can never send two people in a house unless I have two people outside that house. So it's two in, two out rule. So when a fire engine shows up right now and we have two people on it, we are waiting for the next engine from wherever it's coming, if there's staff to come in. Otherwise, we're, we're on the outside. We, we're not allowed to really go in it to do that stuff.
Wow.
So uh, that's why your, your fire departments always strive to have four. Sometimes it's hard to get there, but make progress, you know, you move to three and then, and then you try to move up. And the reason why you have four is because the guy driving the rig handles all the pumping for that call. As, you know, fire engine can flow fifteen hundred gallons of man dust, fifteen hose lines out, there's all kinds of calculations and stuff going on. When that person's there and he starts the fire, that person needs to stay there. The two firefighters, if you have two firefighters on, then they're going to take the hose and try to take her the initial problem. And then you have an officer that's overseeing strategy and tactics. Right now we have two. So when those two show up, there, we have to wait for up. The Malone's cow fire, if they're not available, then it's longer work. We have, we will start doing stuff on the outside. But as you guys all know, fire bubbles inside every minute. So if I got a one bedroom fire that I can go in and get, but I don't have enough people there, two minutes later, it's three bedrooms on fire.
This may not be a fair question, but what's the typical response time for the other units? How long?
It depends. Alterville Malone's is a volunteer fire department. I do not staff, I am the chief over there too as well. I do not staff that station twenty-four seven every, all days of the year. So there might be days when that engine's not available and they're not responding over here. Cow fires, oh, oh, there's across the street from us. If they're around, seven months out of the year, we get them when they're not around, then we don't get them. So there is that period of time where we don't get help. And even if they are around, they can be in Southern California, they can be all over the place. So it's very difficult. So the goal, and I've said this from the beginning when I started, is to attempt to try to make ways to get to that fourth person. At least get three. And then if we have a duty officer on, they can assume that company officer role when they get there. But uh, and you'll see, I'm going to show you a video why that's so important in just a second.
I, I do have a question about the twenty-seven fires. Were those in the City of Angels?
They were not in the City of Angels.
How many were in the City of Angels?
I would say thirteen.
Okay. And so then the fourteen of them were outside the city and we were mutual aid.
Correct. With auto aid. So in the county, just so you guys know, it used to be mutual aid where you'd call your friends for help, make a decision how that works. About seven years ago, all the county fire chiefs made a decision to not do that. They, they, they changed to what's called auto aid. Auto aid means, like I said, there's ten stations in the county. If you need five fire engines, a close five, five engines, but it doesn't matter where you at. It was complete boundary drop because there's places where rangers are just passing other rigs. We always want to try to have the closest rig out, just like when you call for a police officer. We don't care if it's Angels PD, the Sheriff's Department, CHP, Park Ranger, we want the closest police officer to get there. So that's how that works. We, and we ran fires in Arnold, Lurdes, Copper, San Andreas, To Walleye County even occasionally, we went over at that park. Like Tuttle Town area, because we're pretty close.
So when you leave the station, how, how many folks are, are you know, you only have two firefighters on duty?
Correct.
So if they go off to a fire, then this house is unpersoned.
Correct. And now what we do as duty officers, when that happens, when a large call starts out of like, let's say Angels, Alterville, Cal Fire, boom, they're all gone on the call. They take off, whatever the call is. And it happens, it happens on a regular basis. Then the duty officer then makes, we, we contact the dispatch center, we create a move-up. We're like, Murphy's will move down and cover, San Andreas will move over and cover. And that's going to change to an automatic move-up probably in about six months. So we don't have to pay attention. When there's a hole, there'll be another department that will move to get. And all the fire chiefs have agreed to help everybody out on that. So we get a big call, they're all gone, San Andreas would move over, or Murphy's would move down, what, however that shall be. So. Okay, uh, and then basically, you know, we constantly evaluate and reevaluate. The department, we always try to improve our service to our community. We're always trying to get to the NFPA standards. All right. Fire department, we show them the right one. Um, so we got into the retirement system, I believe, couple in two thousand four, right? And then PEPRA in two thousand thirteen. Uh, out of all those firefighters that you've seen, remember the, the part timers aren't necessarily involved, involved in that. We have the three full timers that are fully benefited. Uh, the, all the part timers are not. They're just making minimum wage. You know, in the past, when I, when I came here, uh, it, again, we were making minimum wage back then. We're still making minimum wage now. So we haven't made any progress in eight and a half years to adjust the entry level position above minimum wage. As you all know, you guys know people working around here, you know what they're making and you know what the places are hiring for. So we're well below, below that. Um, and the only increases that we've had since I've been here has really been based on minimum wage. So when minimum wage goes up fifty cents, then the, then that position goes up and then the other positions in the, in the MOU would go up like fifty cents. So those are, we haven't had major uh advancements in, in the wage. So obviously that calls causes turnover issues. Do you want to switch to that one? And then we can switch back. But I want to go, I want to show you this. This is really important. So in turnover issues, can we go to the next slide? Thank you. So since, yeah, so since I've been here. So since I've been here, I've overseen forty employees. Now I have ten, eleven. These are all the people that have left since I've been the chief. I've lost almost thirty people. And these people all leave to go to other departments. Some are larger, we understand that, but some are smaller. We've had people leave and go to West Point. We've had people go to Central, people are working for Copper Fire. We shouldn't be losing people to other departments in our county for pay. But it's happened. You can see where all these people went. But that's, think about that turnover. Out of forty people, I've lost thirty in eight and a half years. That's roughly four a year. So that's, you know, like sixty-six, seventy percent of the fire department. So I just want to share that with you. And these people all leave strictly for, for pay. And, and I get it. And we all get it, you know, so. Okay, so we can go back to the other, back slide, one slide over again. So so that, you know, obviously we've had people leave. I, we've had openings for the last few months that I've been paying with overtime. You guys probably saw on your paperwork. I probably tapped out the overtime budgets in fire department in the first quarter. Cause we, we had two openings. I had nobody to fill in. We're, it was just causing overtime. We know we've worked through that and we've got that figured out, but there is high overtime cost. Also that turnover, it keeps happening, turnover, 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 turnover. When it comes to training events, we have to give them all these classes, we have to do all this stuff. Like you spend all this money on them and then they leave and then I have to start all over. And uh, what's important to understand about that is our area is technical. When you go to the academy and even your big cities normally, you're responding to houses on a fire and you get there, it's a house. There's plenty of room on both sides. It's a big street. There's a hydrant two, three hundred feet away. Our area is super technical. And so it's a lot different when you go to fire school, if you will, and go through the academy and learn on a cookie cutter situation like something like the Dr. Greenhorn, something really easy to lay out. Everything that we have on the other side of the highway and over here, those streets, we all know, ten, twelve feet wide, pony hydrants. We have new people continuously on the engine. I can't expect a new person to figure out that fire bubble. It's going to be hard. That's why it's so important that we have to have a supervisor show up to try to help them be successful. And that's why, you know, one of the things that Nate works hard on is these target houses, trying to figure out how to work into certain areas and train our guys. When we get them trained up a little bit, and you can't take the ladder truck on this street, can't turn on that street, can't turn here, they have to go the street above it. And then we get those guys dialed in and then they leave and they're gone. So we're constantly, and if you think about our experience level, even out of our three company officers on the fire engine, two of them have been full-time for two years here and one's been less than a year. And everybody else is part-time. Some of those part timers work one day a month. That's something I'm going to be addressing because maybe that's not even appropriate. You know, we maybe get to require them to work more hours or whatever moving forward. So we talked about, and, and that causes increased response time. If you don't know where you're going, when we have crazy streets, Mark Twain's all over the place, you don't know how to access it, you know, we, it's just difficult. And so when you have two new people on a rig that are looking at a map that aren't super familiar, it becomes difficult. So and then as a group, we need to decide what's the appropriate staffing level for the fire department. What kind of service you want to provide to your city? Me as the chief, I want to make this the smallest, safest city in the state of California. We have a very small footprint. We should try to do the best. And if we do stuff like that, that brings in your businesses, it brings in residents, it brings in retirement, it brings in everything. People want to come up here because it's safe. So I just want to try to, try to move toward that. Um, so, I mean, I know staffing levels, it, it all revolves around money. But as a group, it'd be nice to have some meetings and talk about what's appropriate staffing goals. Now with that, I want to, I want to show you a slide that, or a couple pictures and one video that shows why experience is important. In the fire service, we have things that's called a near miss. A near miss is when somebody almost died, we all review it and we try to change our static strategy and tactics positive. So this was a fire we had. I was in Dillon Beach, my fire, that was a bad day. And a lot of bad things happened that day. But this is the fire that we're responding to. This is in Copperopolis. So what I want to show you here is it doesn't look too bad. You know, there's a little fire going over here. I can tell you what happened here. There was cars out here and an RV that caught on fire. Fire started lapping up into the building. This is not inside, this is all insulation right there. So, you know, you look at it, oh, that's not too bad. Now I'm looking at that and there's a lot of things that I see. This is where young kids can't see it. The first thing I see is this whole roof is solar panels. That scares the crap out of me. Anybody inside there? I'm going, oh my gosh, this isn't good, right? And there's smoke coming from all the eaves all the way around the house. So people are going, a new person goes, oh, there's fire over here. If I can get over here and get to that. Or I'm going, oh, I think that whole attic's probably burning. That's what I, that's what I'm thinking, right? We have a rule called seven seventeen. What that means is if you're responding to a fire and there's fire in the attic, if it's a uh conventional or not a conventional, a uh trust, a, a regular trust, not, not a conventional construction, but trust system, lightweight trust. If there's fire, call the firefighter, they have seven minutes. You can take on that before the roof collapses. Conventional construction, you have seventeen minutes. Okay, so I want to say this. So at this point in time, there's four firefighters that are going to go into this house. Two firefighters from Copperopolis, brand new, brand new, super new. They're going to go in this back door and they're making access to up top. The Alterville Malone's engine shows up shortly after them and they go in with another line and they're with them behind there. So we've got four brand new firefighters are inside. Taking the, I'm here, I'm going to handle this, right? Copper doesn't always have a duty officer on our battalion sheet. So the closest battalion sheet's going to go or the closest duty officer. At this time, it was from Alterville Malone's, it was John Parks, thirty-year firefighter from Palo Alto Fire. So he's responding down there. Play the video. So he gets on scene, you're going to hear what he says. Make sure no one's out there. Okay. So this is my point to this. This is why it's so happened, so important to have experience on the fire engine. It's so important to have someone who understands building construction, understands how to read smoke. Because he pulled them out when he arrived on scene, this is cam, and, and this is the next shot. This is three minutes after he pulled them out. So they just got their stuff out. Now you can see that whole second story is involved. I can assure you, that would have probably been extremely problematic if he did not show up. So, I mean, we'd be potentially dealing with
Who was that that showed up?
John Parks, battalion sheet from, from Altville. So then you can go to the next scene. So you can see what would have happened, firefighters that they're in on the second floor. And then there's our ladder truck that was there. And then he pulled everybody away from the building. So this building's down, I don't want anybody around it, I'm concerned about collapse. And all we did was spray water from the truck until they got it out. So our, our truck, I mean, our guys did a good job. Our guys never were in danger. But if they had have been there to say to beat the Altville, they would have been the two people that were inside. So my, what I'm trying to say is experience matters in the fire department. And you've got to have at least one experienced person there. It's the same thing on a vehicle accident. You have a complicated extrication where people are trapped. I mean, we're, we show up and we, we understand all this stuff and we can make the cuts in our place or change things up. A new person, they just learned one thing in the academy, that I got a cut here. Well, that's not going to work, you know? So it's just important that we have, you know, somebody of experience or a supervisor, but some type has to be there pretty quick to ensure things like this don't happen.
Because those four probably thought there were two people. They had heard that there were.
Yeah, so there's a lot, there's a lot to that story. There's a lot to that. Um, the people I was on vacation with in Dillon Beach live next door. It's Bruce Eads. You know Bruce. He actually got a phone call that his house was on fire. The text came to my phone. I said, what's your address on Single Tree? He goes, oh my gosh, that's my house. He calls Levi Rollins. Levi Rollins was over there. I said, no, it's the house in the store. And it's very interesting. So and other people that I went, they're all, they all live by, live these people. So John Parks is on the phone to me going, hey, are these people inside the house? You know, they're both, there's two. John Parks is on the phone to me going, hey, are these people inside the house? You know, they're both, there's two cars. But everybody at that point sort of thought they might be inside the house. Because their cars were there, they were actually on a three month cruise. So, so what happened was the copper guys became aware that, hey, there might be two people in there and they tried to go in, okay? Now, again, experience matters. It's called like at nine thirty in the morning, the fire started outside, burned up two cars, burned up a motorhome, this thing's been going for a long time. Brakes, two rear huge windows. So me, I'm going, the likelihood of someone being in there is probably pretty low. Cause if fire started outside and the windows broke, I would hope that they had got outside. So, you know, the way that I would have done it, I might not send anybody in there because, and I'm willing to, based on my chain and my experience. So it's just something that, that, those kind of decisions to send people in. We only, we only risk a life to save a savable life. And I also go, okay, well, there's fire in half that house already on one side. It's already eight hundred and fourteen degrees inside, it's not survivable anyways. So, you know, someone's got to make that big decision and say, it's not survivable, we're not risking life, we're not risking our life to save an unsavable life. But we're all happy that they weren't there. And they were in Brazil like me. So that's about really all I have to say. And just in closing, you know, I just want to work with you guys to discuss about is minimum wage appropriate for entry level? How much higher should it be based on all the certifications and stuff that we have to do and the risks that they may have to take? And then talk about, you know, staffing levels potentially on, on our equipment, what, what do we want for our city? What will be like, what's appropriate? And then we'll move from there. I'm a budget driven guy, I, you know, I know how much budget there is. I always try to work within that budget to do the best we can and maybe think outside of the box on ideas. So if you have any other questions, be glad to answer them about any.
So it sounds like you would need an additional two firefighters at the station, so that you'd have four. Or is that, is that, is that reasonable or what are you suggesting?
In a perfect world, that would be great. I would accept three.
Right, because?
Because we have some other supervisors that may be able to come on the scene. I'd like to, you know, even with the six that, you know, right now, the way it's sort of set up with two people, if you have three shifts. If you had six people full time, that at least both two people are dialed in, the other person maybe could be part time. But, you know, we just want to move that direction. I do think three, four's great. Not sure if we get there, if we can, you definitely be one of the state of cities in the state of California. But even if we can make progress to get to three, where between Mark, Nate and myself, we know we're coming to that call. You're getting somebody there for that fourth person that could then take charge and, you know. Cause what would happen if it was ran that way, a lot of times the captain's going to be the guy pumping the thing or doing stuff or whatever, or however it works out. But then he's also trying to run the fire, but then we can leave that person there and then we can run the fire, you know, so. So I think, you know, the first step would be try, try to get the three on the rig. And that would be great progress. And then we could re-aduate that, that over the course of time.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Going to do the mic drop, I can.
And we're pretty close to John, so we just have a little bit more. So this is the administration and finance team. So if you looked over the twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-three strategic plans, it talks repeatedly, over and over and over again. About the need for support of financial services, the need for administrative services for departments overall. So in terms of what does administration and finance do? Well, a little bit of everything. So anything finance related, grant administration, but it's, a lot of times it's more than grant administration. Sometimes we're the ones that have to go and apply for these grants, even though it's a water grant, or it's a waste park grant, or it's a law enforcement grant or a fire grant. But there is just not enough bandwidth in those other operational departments to do that. We are charged with revenue recovery, so a big part of what I did when I came in was looked at all of our revenue contracts. Are we collecting what we're supposed to be collecting? Are we billing what we're supposed to be billing? I don't like to leave money on the table, so if it's somewhere that I can get it, then I'm, I'm going to get it. It's also strategic planning support. We are doing treasury services. We have mandatory fiscal functions and we have functions of, of financial, because you guys asked for it. Or it's best practice. We adhere to governmental accounting standard for pronouncements as well as GFOA, best practices. We are doing the website management, we're the public information arm. We do all the social media management for, for city, all, all the payroll and resources functions. We do employee engagement, which we really tried to work really hard on. You know, since I've gotten here to try to do those quarterly recognition employee things, so that they feel that we're acknowledging what they're doing. A lot of public engagement, we have a lot of external agency coordination that's going on, whether that's with council of governments or Calabas County and whatever department it is that we're working with. As well as state and federal partners. We do also, in addition to the fire department doing emergency services, city administration is doing emergency services. We handle all the claims, so anytime someone wants to file a claim into the city, we are dealing with it. We also deal with project administration support. Again. These aren't necessarily, you know, financial projects, but they're projects that have to do with, you know, in, any of our operational departments. But again, they don't have the administrative support in order to manage those projects in the way that they need to, especially if it's grant funded. So we will provide that service. Clerk to council, commissions, subcommittees, we're all customer service. So whether it's utility customer service or any other customer service or any other general services that we have. And then we just coordinate across all the departments. So in terms of staffing, like I said, in both of those documents, it points to a need for shared administrative resources. And I've also heard several times from some, several of you, when we're bringing something to the forefront, one of the questions is, well, do you have time to do it? And the answer is, not necessarily, but it's almost too important not to fit it in somewhere. So we'll, we'll just try to get, you know, get these things done as best we can. But, you know, this, this, you know, I think where we've historically fallen short is we really have not had city public information officer, right? So it's when people think about it. So I've worked really hard with staff to try to push as much information as we possibly can. But that is, that is a load. And then if you kind of adhere it back to the strategic plan, doing routine strategic planning functions, that was eighteen point one. When Stacy came from Citygate, you know, this was one of her things, it was who on staff can handle the strategic planning functions? And she said, and it shouldn't be you. Well, I'm looking at my staff and there is not much more that they can take on. And so it's, you know, but it's, that person is also providing the, the business analysis and support for all the departments, which is also fine. It's economic development agencies. It talked a lot about ensuring that we have local control over our policies, our economic development and our revenue stabilization. Assisting with infrastructure programs and economic development plan, assisting with the implementation of, you know, all, all of it. And that's just kind of where we're kind of missing the mark a little bit. So we're doing it light as much as we can fit in. But there's so much more that we could do that would have really big payoffs for the city. In terms of police, sorry. So in terms of police staffing, you know, we talked and Scott, you know, we said, you know, I'm, I'm, I feel pretty good. I mean, the city has made some pretty incredible investments in police department. You know, we got a new contract for the police unit, they're stable. And in that, you know, we, we tried to be really creative on, on how to get, you know, them in the door and how to retain them, how to get them trained up. And we've been fairly successful. We have one opening that we're trying to get someone in to get through the academy. But it's far better than what it was, like exceptionally better than what it was. And a lot of what they have been asking for in terms of investment in equipment and technology over the last, you know, five or six years. We have taken care of it this year. So they're, they're really in a good position. However, the reality is they're one position away from having some pretty critical service delivery issues. That's not something that any other police department or law enforcement agency isn't also experiencing, but it's just something to be aware of. So when we kind of stand back and we look at, well, what could we offer in terms of helping in some way, shape or form? For the police department to take some of the edge off of the officers so we can utilize them in a more ambitious manner? We talked about a community services officer. So that position would kind of check all your boxes. So I've heard from multiple council members about, well, maybe we need a full time code enforcement officer. We can't really pencil that out, but a community services officer could provide code compliance life. So very kind of low ever simple ones. We would still continue with a consultant on those more risky code compliance violations that are, are pretty egregious health and safety. Or are kind of those long haul ones. But a community services officer could certainly provide service on those other elements of code compliance, which has been talked about. It's also dealing with the evidence room, handling, management. I think, you know, in talking to at least you, I kind of think like maintenance of the evidence room is like the sock drawer, you'll get to it eventually. Until you run out of socks, then you don't have a choice.
Can I speak on that for a second, just so there's a better understanding of how that works?
But it has to be maintained.
So as it stands right now, Teresa in my office, who's my administrative secretary, who's my EJ reporting person, who's my report reporting person, who's my, you know, gets up to the DA's office. Who's my office assistant for me to help me get my job done in a lot of areas, is also in charge of our evidence room. She just processed like two hundred firearms that we've had up there for the last thirty-five, forty years. Because of an inability over this time to process those, because it's not like you can just go, let's just throw them in the dumpster. So there's a whole huge process where we have to go to the courts, we've got to get releases from the courts for all of those types of things. So she spends every Friday, and this was since I've been the chief, that's what she does on Fridays. I don't have anybody in the office, she spends the whole day on Fridays. Just to keep us above water upstairs in the evidence room. I don't know if you guys have ever seen our evidence room, but it's not small or anything, but there's just a lot of stuff in there, there's a lot of organization and responsibility. Nobody's allowed access in there except for her and I, because of chain of custody issues for evidence. So my thought as part of this was, would be if we did get a community service officer at some point in the future, that person could partially take over some of the responsibilities of the evidence room and help get us up to speed. So at least we're dealing with maybe cases in the last ten years, not cases in the last forty to fifty years in some cases. There are retention issues where some cases we have to retain evidence forever. But a lot of times we just have evidence that we still haven't in our custody because we don't have the resources and the time to get it processed and get it disposed of properly. Cause there's, and then just to dispose of it, there's a specific location where we have to dispose of it, we've got to identify every piece of evidence to the company that disposes it. We've got to witness the disposal and destruction of the evidence. So just that in itself is a day, day long process when we get to that point. So anyways, I just wanted, the, the evidence room is a big, big issue. The other, the other thing is too, is that, that Teresa, I think in the next several years may be retiring. Or, or maybe going part time or something. So it would be nice to have somebody else to kind of share her, once we were talking about institutional knowledge or whatever. This would be a perfect opportunity to get somebody with some knowledge, you know, an understanding of how that property evidence room works. I mean, I'll go up there and work on occasion when she's on, when Teresa's on vacation, because officers book evidence in the, in the lockers, we've got to remove them, we've got to book them, we've got, they book them into the evidence room. Then the evidence room has to collect them and document that they've been booked into the evidence room and they're now being stored there. From a temporary evidence locker into the actual evidence room. So there's a, it's a substantial process and, and chain of custody is huge when you're talking about courtroom testimony in, in those processes and how we handle evidence. So just so there's an understanding of, of the intricacies of, oh, an evidence room, you know, it's not like, it's not a big deal, it is a big deal and it takes a lot of time and manpower to run that. Teresa's done a great job, but it, it also keeps her an entire day a week from doing the other things that she should, could be doing to keep us, keep our head above water. And like everywhere, everybody else, regulations, rules, everything, they, they don't, they're not less on law enforcement. They're constantly changing and becoming more restrictive and more reporting requirements that we have to do to the state. And we do monthly reporting, we do quarterly reporting on different things and we do annual reporting on, on different things. So there's, there's just a lot to that. And every time a law changes, it changes the way we have to do things internally. And over the last five years since I've been there, it's just gotten, you know, it's almost ridiculous, the amount of time we, we spend doing work on things that probably aren't as. I don't consider it should be as significant as they are, but they're state, they're state mandates, so we don't have a choice. And yet, you know, we're still with the same staffing that we've always had and over the last, at least twenty-four years since I've been familiar with the police department. So anyways, just something to keep in mind, I don't have anything else on that, if you guys, unless you guys have any questions.
And, and so I think, you know, there's, there's things that, you know, have to be done, but they will be pushed off as far as they can possibly be pushed off. And so that's really what the evidence room does until it just can't perform. But this type of position could also respond to traffic collisions instead of patrol. They can write parking citations instead of patrol. And so right now, parking citations, just, they're just not as important for patrol to be doing as, you know, we would want them to do. However, we get all the parking citation revenue for the entire county. Not that the sheriff's department is going to go out and do a bunch of parking citations, but if they did, we get the revenue for it. So we can get revenue off parking citations and we do get complaints about parking issues all the time. But in terms of, is it, you know, more important to go write a parking citation or is it more important to patrol a particular area that we've been having issues? We're always going to take the one that's be more kind of community support. And then, and then it's that basic code compliance. So it is a, it, it is a support option for the police department that would help better utilize the patrol staff that we have. Without having to add additional patrol staff. And it does take kind of some of the burden off them. And then it helps free up Teresa, so that she can work on the other things that she needs to work on. And then it's just a matter of, we need to just continue with long-term planning. You know, I, I think I said in, in a recent email to all of you, planning is a long game. And so what you're planning for today, you may not see the outcome or the results of that planning in your tenure here. The next council might not see it, the next council might not see it. It might happen twenty years from now. But it's important that we have those plans developed and maintained. So that as there is grant funding associated with some element of that master plan, it will align itself. And it makes it easier to identify that grant funding and get it awarded. It also helps, you know, when, you know, those circulation elements happen. The, the twenty years from now, you know, like we're seeing with Foundry Lane, it will happen. And then once that happens, it opens up other development opportunities that wouldn't have been there otherwise. So it's making sure that, you know, we're continuing with that planning. And, you know, Amy and I have talked about it, but I think, you know, I get the concept, I think it's hard for some people to, to, this is a hard thing to, to do. When things are really slow, that's when you want to really keep planning. Don't stop planning, don't stop investing in planning. But when there are financial hard times, I think there's things like that that just kind of go by the wayside because you're, you're trying to make. because you're you're trying to make cuts. That's never an area that you should you should cut. Um so in terms of recommendations, you know, we're really just looking for direction from you on operational staffing needs that have been presented. We're looking for what are the performance metrics? That's something that we're still working internally to try to identify, but what does success mean to you in terms of, you know, the strategic plan, recommendations and objectives? Is it, you know, service calling? Is it, you know, surveys to uh to your constituents? Is it like what what is it that would determine that we're being successful, we're going down the right road, or we're not? Is it revenue growth? You know, I want to see revenue growth five percent, you know, every year. Um or the number of building permits that are happening, or the number of business licenses that are going on. Um and then just direction on overall strategic planning. Um and then stakeholder engagement. So for you, a lot of these conversations could go real, real deep. And, you know, what does that look like? Are we, do you want to utilize the subcommittees? Do you want these conversations to be held at full council meetings um with regular agenda or on a special meeting? Um and then in terms of when we are identifying, you know, certain pathways that we're going to go down or new objectives that we're going to do, you know, what are those methods of recommended public outreach that you want to see us utilize beyond what we're already doing? And so that's really all I've got. Um it's a lot of information. And like I said to all of you, like I don't necessarily expect, you know, like Kate go down to this, but we wanted to plant a lot of this in your heads because budget development is coming. And um we need to start discussing what those kind of big overreaching strategies are for that next um budget um contemplation and.
All right, council, any questions, comments?
I guess my only comment would be is, you know, typically um you'd look at um cities that are comparable in size, you know, that so then they all would fall into a breadbasket. And it would be good to know, and I don't want to create more work. Um but, you know, what's the staffing levels at a city with similar size? In fire and and, you know, with our public works with um so that, you know, we would get an idea of of what normal means. Because it doesn't sound like we're normal, but in terms of staffing and and, you know, what emphasis do we want to place on that? And what importance do we want to place on on some of the things that we've heard tonight?
Do you want to open it to public comment? All right, is there any public comment? Online? No.
We'll also make sure that you get this power going to if you want.
Thank you. I think it's obviously a lot of information and it's a lot to digest. And so I would think I would like to see it as a special meeting. I think that um obviously just this presentation alone took, what, over an hour? And that was just information, not even really us getting into anything or throwing any ideas around or talking about anything. So I think getting a special meeting on the calendar would be helpful, you know, and maybe starting it at an earlier time. Um I also wouldn't want to take away from one of our regular scheduled meetings. Um so that's that's my opinion. I don't know if anyone has anything else to share with Rose.
I was just gonna say that um I would love to see, uh sometimes I like to see like the ideal picture, and then you have to work down from that. Um but that also includes, you know, doing some approximations on revenue too, because I can't make I don't know how, yeah, I mean, I can't do those kinds of decisions without knowing where we are ballparking revenues coming in. But I I like to shoot like high and then go, okay, what's, what can we do that's realistic, that is a compromise? And what's the five-year goal looking forward to hit the that ideal that would be um for each department?
Does that provide you with enough direction or do you?
Yeah, so um what I've done in the past is so we can um, you know, Michelle and I can work on projecting out what revenue, all revenues would be, uh normal revenues, would be from an operational standpoint in the general fund and also on water and mixed water. And then what the current staffing costs are, concurrent uh services and supplies that are just the common regular ones. Um inclusive of any known increases, so we know there's going to be there's inflators in the various contracts that we have. And then then you can see where we're at, and then from there, what you could add and what that either should call or, you know, whatever it is. Um and then, you know, in our twenty-three, twenty-four budget, if you recall, there's also a five-year kind of look-forward projection as well. And um so just remember that we that's how we took the three quarters of a million dollars right out of the general fund. But we still have far more unassigned general fund dollars in order to contribute towards various things. I don't ever recommend using one-time dollars for ongoing costs. However, I will say, um you know, what Michelle and I will do is look at the projections inclusive of development that we know is going to be happening. So we will incorporate that, even though we may not see it in this next fiscal year, but we may very well see it in the following one.
So do we have like projections from Habitat for Humanity, what our tax base will increase by? Is there a way to to get an assessment based on that? Because that would be income, that isn't one-time. That would be ongoing.
That's ongoing. And then we do know of development that is happening commercial-wise. Um so we would just have to contemplate kind of what that timeline is going to look at, but that would be um that would be felt in there as well. And then we are looking at uh engaging with lodging uh partners to see about any expansions that they can do. I mean, those are really our bread and butter in terms of where we get the most bank for our buck is T O T. And anything involving sales tax, we get very little from the actual property taxes. So if we were to get a development in, we still get less, I mean, you get a small percentage of what the overall is.
You know, one of the things and the reason why I asked Mich- Michelle um what percent is local property taxes, because I was one that would said, you know, taxes can never go negative. And yeah, taxes went negative. And then, you know, if if the city, if if it's only twenty-five percent of our budget is based on property, local property taxes, um that's something that at least we're cognizant of. And it's always important, I heard you say earlier, that, you know, typically local property taxes, because of Prop thirteen, can only go up by two percent based on the consumer price index. Can't increase more than that. Uh it could be less than that. But, you know, it's always good to keep that in mind, because then it will be a constant. If it's a great surprise if it goes to eight.
Right.
But if it goes to two, then we we can then think about at least being conservative and pleasantly surprised if it's more.
Right.
But not plan for more and have it go less, because that is creating a huge problem.
Okay, so you guys are good on planning a special meeting?
Yeah.
So all, we'll work with Rose and try to get some dates and then we'll reach out.
Perfect. All right. Um so that includes our regular agenda. We'll move on to uh item P, which is the administration report.
Uh, okay, so um we are um gonna be staff and I, we're going to be meeting with Ware Construction um in the office on the twentieth to kind of nail down the di- the different design elements. Um and so we're really trying to get like down and dirty in terms of what are all of the exact components that would be in the park so that we can um truly identify if there's any outliers for a budget where we might need to ever flow based on our funding for that. So that will be on the twentieth. Uh and then, as Amy said, the perk uh design committee is meeting on the fifteenth.
No, that's a special, twenty-first. It's the twenty-first, I thought.
The twenty-first is the present, the GeoTech.
Yeah.
No, no, but I thought she was going to meet with the subcommittee on the fifteenth anyway.
Yeah, I think the subcommittee is on the fifteenth, um so that would be for the perks of me. Um and then uh on the twentieth, which is going to be future agenda items, Cal, so we've been working with Caltrans um since the end of last year on nailing down a a couple of Ds, because we need to start getting more public engagement on the uh mobility project. So um they would like to come to city council. It's just going to be a regular agenda and it's just going to be a basically a discussion item. Um but in addition to that, we ask for them to actually come out and do a more thorough town hall because public engagement is very limited at a city council meeting. So it's really a one-way conversation. Um and so the uh town hall right now is scheduled for March seventh from four to eight P M at Bret Hart Multipurpose.
Four to what?
Is it in the Mike Shumet Day? Cafeteria? Yes.
Four to seven, four to eight.
I just saw that your name was on that building for the first time.
Yeah.
So they will be bringing um staff and they're going to set up uh different based on questions that they might have expertise. So if someone has questions about right-of-way, if someone has questions about the engineering, I mean, whatever it is. And so unlike if anyone uh went to the last town hall, there was a lot of questions they couldn't ask, answer. Um they are prepared to answer all the questions this time. Uh so that will be from four to eight uh on the seventh. Uh I'm going to be out of office this Thursday and Friday, so I'll be working with staff on who's going to have a what, and then I'll just send out an email uh to everyone. Uh I am working with code compliance, um so we're getting uh to the point where with all of the code compliance that we are doing, where we're actually uh getting to the point where we're going to have to do hearings, all of her, you know, hearings. Um it is not recommended to have staff be the hearing officer. We want to be totally out of it. So I talked to C S G and they have identified uh another party that could step in as our hearing officer. So they're going to get me a proposal for that, and then they would participate in that in that hearing.
So this hearing, you have uh the city present its case, and then you would have that person almost like in a planning commission type situation?
Yep.
Now, is that ultimately going to land on our laps? Is that, is that going to be?
It it could. And so um before we would, so generally what has happened is I've been uh, you know, at the county, so it would go through the hearing process. So the the um property owner doesn't agree with the notice of violation. They don't agree with any of the steps. They go to the the hearing officer, hearing officer upholds. Um and then at that point, um I've seen it done a couple of ways. Um take back to the legislative body to basically have you bless it for it to be adjudicated. So then we would, you would agree, yes, let's go ahead and go forth taking it to the court. And then we would go from from there. Um I think in some cases, it doesn't necessarily have to come to city council, so we'll just have to, you know, figure out what's the best way to do that. Um and then I'm also going to be meeting with um Doug White, our attorney, uh this this week uh via phone call, just to talk about some other options for some of our more complicated code violation cases uh on how to deal with them. And it's in a way we've never done it before, but I think it's reassuring the opportunities for the city. Um I think we've had some cases in our history where um we just, it would have been too expensive for us to evade, but there's different options that we will to do. So I'm going to talk to him about that. Um and then uh I'm meeting with uh Jessica and Joel, I think we're doing it on Zoom. And we're going to go over some proposals that he got for financial review for Utica um because that was the basis of what we would be able to contemplate in our researches. And um Michelle's going to be getting uh whoever's going to be at the cog meeting uh just update on cog of the project information. And then just a reminder, we have the infrastructure special um or subcommittee on the twelfth. And then we have the finance policy uh subcommittee on February twenty-second.
Time is at the twelve.
Uh twelve A M. And then um we asked Doug about um the special meeting for the council handbook. And he suggested that the twenty-first would work.
Oh.
February. That would work.
Okay.
Did not, wrote out some other dates, um but then we'd probably be looking at March.
Is that an all-day meeting or a half-day meeting?
For the council handbook, so it's going through.
Probably would need to start early.
Yeah, so.
I would imagine it would be like.
I'll send the um.
You'll send it if I?
Yeah, the sooner I get it on the calendar, the better. And um I have some other future agenda items, but we can kind of all get.
Okay, great. On to item number nine, which is council report. I'll start with you, Mike.
Oh, okay. Um this is just a going meeting that I attended. I shared the information prior to C P A meeting. And uh the uh J P A agreed to roll those dollars back to um the member districts. So you'll see almost a seven and a half decrease from twenty to seventeen point five cents a kilowatt. So then I, you know, just like the rest, attended the joint meeting and I thought it was very beneficial to have everyone uh be there to try to get on the same page as we move forward. And also I attended the special uh meeting held by Joel regarding Niforg re-licensing. And I thought that was very informative and educational. Yeah.
I also went to the Utica meeting that was really good. Um I also attended the solid waste task force, um which did not exactly happen. It was just more of a open forum and talk, uh because we didn't have a quorum. And Jen, Paul, Cameron, a couple of different people, but the county has to approve Cameron and can't remember the name right now. Either way, that should be happening this month.
The members at large.
The members at large, um that have not been done yet. So uh Ben Stoffer is going to find out what is going to happen and we'll have another meeting.
Carolyn? I went to the U W P A uh J P A meeting and that was good. Um and that's all I've got. Okay, and I um I attended the LAFCO on January twenty-second. And let's see, we talked about, or we have a hearing for the Calmarish Resource Conservation District. It was the service group as well as the sphere of influence. And we discussed the retirement of John Benoit and not letting him go until June thirtieth. Um so.
Yeah, that time he works on the charter.
So in that time, he's going to be training his uh replacement. So that way there. We don't, we're not lost when we leave. Um and then upcoming projects that are on LAFCO's radar, Societal Angels, MSR and Sphere of Influence. Um and then he reminded us that, and he said he's going to talk to you, Rose, about our Form seven hundreds. And doing that online. So I'll put that out there for us too as a reminder.
Yeah.
On the due April second. And then, like everyone else, I attended the joint meeting. And then tomorrow I will be attending cog on Monday, our infrastructure um subcommittee. So calendar, Rose?
The calendar.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
So um this is how I want to kind of present it to you guys every time. Um and then I also will be, if you guys don't remember, your committee appointments as well, so. But um going back to the calendar, then we are will add um again, and on the twenty-first, Doug coming out to do the handbook, if everybody is um okay with that date. Uh the twelfth is the infrastructure at eight A M.
Uh the 12th is the infrastructure at 8:00 A. M. Um all hazards on the 13th. We have the holiday coming up, so.
What's that, what's that cog tag?
So it's it's the tack meeting that Rebecca goes to. Um so and it's through cog. And then there's also the IRWMA meeting, so. So that's definitely staff, so.
I've not emailed you on the send.
Yep.
Yes. So you.
So just I don't know what you want to do.
I forget whether it was punt or something.
Yes.
And I haven't had a chance to respond back yet.
Was that my time?
Yeah, so it was a punt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you're going to UWPA from there?
Yes.
Okay, um item 11, correspondence. There was a letter there from 39th Mr. Agricultural Association, Calaveras County Fair and Turbine Grove Jubilee, asking for the City of Angels to become a partner in the endeavors and waive any associated.
Lori's been on the. Lori's been to the whole meeting. She's, go ahead, Lori.
Hi.
She has her James on, go ahead.
No, kind of. Um yeah, I did write you a letter. I also did um fill out the uh, sorry, the grant application. Um and I filled out all the event information. So we're asking for you to be our partner in the historic event, which is the um in Utray.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we'll move on.
Does it require a motion?
No, it's just correspondence that we received.
Yes.
Um okay, so item number 12, which is future agenda items.
So future agenda items would be the social media policy. We got the travel reimbursement policy uh dropped back um that I sent. So that uh we don't have one. And so we're probably going to have a travel reimbursement policy. Um and then I'm also going to be asking, it's not required at this time, but just in case they ask for one, I'm going to bring it to the next meeting. So the uh the um CARB has basically, which is the Runya Air Resources Board, has said that Calaveras is on the list of exempted counties, but you can choose to exempt yourself or not exempt yourself in terms of the clean fleet. And so just to dot that i and cross that t, I'm recommending that we go ahead and exempt ourselves, um which just means we can think about it for a little bit longer until 2026. So it's just postponed, that's all it does. In the meantime, we'll continue to work with cog. We'll continue to look at grant funding opportunities. If we uh can find a vehicle that is a zero emission or nearly zero emission between now and then and we needed it, then certainly, sure. We don't have the infrastructure in place to plug it in anyway. And we've had trouble finding internal combustion vehicles, let alone the ZEV vehicles. So at this point, when one of our vehicles needs to be replaced, we just try to find a vehicle. Um and thus far, it's not been ZEV. And we were lucky if we were able to find a combustion one. So um I I think maybe in the next couple of years, uh manufacturers will get caught up and everybody else will get caught up and then it'll all work itself out. But in the meantime, um I'm I'm just going to go ahead and memorialize that we are asking for that exemption.
What's, so what does that mean for the public? Does it, is only applied to the city or?
It applies to, well, uh no, it applies to just about, I mean, they're they're looking at um private sector as well, but they're starting with public sector and not for politics.
So um you know, folks that are driving truck or are running equipment, I mean, at some point, there'll be some lessening of restrictions. Is that what you're finding also?
We're just a couple of years behind, but like, I'll just say like a three-quarter ton truck they don't make yet, so.
Right.
Right.
No, I don't, I don't mean E V, but I'm just talking about, you know, terminal combustion, you know, and diesel trucks and, I mean, our.
They want them off the road.
They want them, yeah.
So even though we're exempt in exempt county, there's not going to be any?
No, all the, all they're giving us is you get two more years to figure it out. You get two more years to get your infrastructure in. You get two more years to identify a fleet replacement schedule. And then in 2026, if you're replacing anything, it needs to be ZEV or NZEV, which would be Nero, zero emission.
And I think it's like 10%, 20%, 50%. It it increases that you have that over the, I think it's 10%. I can't remember the.
There are some exemptions, um but like FIRE has some exemptions. Um if the, and the, it's like for FIRE, I think the 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 one big one is if you, if, and this might help us also because we have a lot of um mutual uh aid agreements, like mutual um sharing agreements between UPUD and UWPA. We'll be bringing one forward here in the future for CCWD. But if you have equipment that you would uh share among because of mutual aid, those could be exempted. So a lot of times the fire sharks will be exempted because they would go out and use them on a strike team. But there's, there's, there's a narrowing list of exemptions and ultimately CARB wants the vehicles off the road.
Even though the power grid won't support it, that's.
All right, great. So we move to item 13, adjournment. Can I get a?
So middle.
Second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Schmenter, from you.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you.